...started. Could we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Present.
Alderman Talonair.
Present.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship, absent. Alderman Genin.
Here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
Thank you. We'll do the pledge allegiance, followed by the moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number five.
Minutes of the April 8th, 2019 meeting.
Moved to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Moved to second. Do any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, update. Well, we have a couple of fun and exciting things going on here. NFL original towns. Rock Island will host a live hometown event to announce the 2019 NFL draft picks. Community is invited to join in the celebrations this Saturday, April 27th. Doors will open at noon and will close somewhere around 4:30. At the Austin E. Nolton Outdoor Athletic Complex at Augustana College. Nearly 100 years after the NFL was born in Canton, Ohio, the NFL is celebrating the 13 communities, including Rock Island, that were home to the 14 teams of the inaugural season. The initiative is part of the NFL 100, a year-long commemoration of its centennial season, bringing together generations of football fans, players, communities, and all 32 clubs for a unique lineup of programming activities. During the 2019 NFL Draft, selections from Rock Island and seven other league original towns outside of the 32 current NFL markets will be made live in a telecast. Our hometown celebration will showcase Rock Island's history alongside fans and elected officials. The historic event solidifies the NFL history in Rock Island and celebrates the Rock Island independence. One of the first NFL charter members who played football on the historic Douglas Park in Rock Island. The gates will open for this free community event, I guess there is noon, April 27th, and there will be family fun zone featuring bouncy houses, carnival games, goody bags for the first 150 children. There will also be a reenactment of the vintage football game. There's also going to be a local artist, Lizzie Morris, singing the National Anthem. There's going to be a lot of kick pass functions, clinics going on for the first 150. Food, drinks, a lot of different activities, the Rock Island and the Almond Bands playing. So there'll be plenty of things to do, listen to, and enjoy. So, once again, you can, if you want more information, you can go to rockislanddraft.com and be ready for some football. We also have Rock Island Unplugged. Please join the city leaders and department directors as they organize the second Rock Island Unplugged on Thursday, May 16th, 2019, at the establishment located at 2020, excuse me, 220 19th Street in Rock Island. This is an informal yet structured event to have an open dialogue with the city officials on city happenings. Order, non-alcoholic beverages, and a cash bar will be available for those to attend, that attend. Doors will open at 5:30 with discussions starting at 6:00. So look forward to those two great events. Thank you.
Yes, are you done, Mr. Mayor, with the update?
Yes.
I had something. And you called me two weeks ago before the meeting, behind rumors or whatever. And if you would, I'll let you put it in your words concerning the financing of my opponent. You told me that you did not have anything to do with that. Do you want to tell the public so they know? Because I've been hearing also that you financed his campaign and that, and you called me and told me. But that's just me.
Yes, I did, I did not put any money into his campaign.
Right.
He called several times and asked questions, and as anybody would, I offered that advice if it would answer the questions that they had, whether it be on finances or policy or whatever. So, that's the involvement I had with any one of the campaigns. I had several of them that way.
But you also told me other people, and you didn't name them, gave you money to give to him to that campaign, is that correct?
One person was ill, couldn't, didn't have access to, you couldn't drive and this sort of thing. So they asked me to give some money to that campaign, that campaign for them.
Yeah.
And I did that. I passed it on. It was the carrier, so to speak.
Okay, well, by you telling it, people believe it. I tell, I tell people, they don't necessarily believe me, but thank you for clearing that up.
No problem. Okay, we have some proclamations.
Number seven, proclamation declaring April 2019 as Alcohol Awareness Month.
I was gonna have you read it, but I think I should tonight, maybe.
I'll read two and you read two.
All right, there you go. Share this duty.
Proclamation, whereas one in every 12 adults or 17.6 million Americans suffer from alcohol use disorder or alcohol dependence, and whereas alcohol is the most commonly used addictive substance in the United States, and whereas nearly 10 million young people ages 12 to 20 report that they've consumed alcohol in the past 30 days, and whereas the typical American will see 100,000 beer commercials before he or she turns 18, and whereas people who abuse alcohol are more likely to be victims of violent crime, to be involved in alcohol-related traffic crashes, and to have serious school-related problems, and whereas a supportive family environment is associated with lower rates of alcohol use for adolescents, and whereas recovery from the medical disease of addiction can be achieved and treatment options are available for those who are suffering.
Therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, along with the members of the City Council, now join the Abbey Center and the National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Dependency and do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Alcohol Awareness Month in our city and call upon all citizens, parents, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, hospitals, schools, and colleges in our community to support efforts that will provide early education about alcoholism and addiction and increased support for individuals and families coping with alcoholism. Through these efforts, together, we can provide hope, help, and healing for those in our community who are facing challenges with alcohol use and abuse. Is there anybody here? Nope, come on up, please.
Get a snap over here, quick. All right, one, two, three. All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I can tell you have a full agenda, so I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I do appreciate you drawing attention to this issue. The thing that struck me in doing the research for this, you know, we focus at the Abbey principally on treating people who suffer from this, but we, as part of our mission, we want to prevent and, and have outreach options as well for, for people. And so when I was preparing for this, I saw that there are, people will see 100,000 beer commercials before they turn 18 years old. So we're really kind of fighting this uphill battle about what, what is the actual risk of consuming alcohol in our communities compared with the perceived experience that people have in these commercials? Just as one example. So, anyway, I appreciate you very much drawing attention to this issue, and we'll continue our hard work to, not only at the Abbey, but with our partners in the community like the Center for Alcohol and Drug Services, now part of Unity Point, the Robert Young Center, Riverside, and a lot of other people who are helping with this issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number eight. Proclamation, proclamation declaring May 4th, 2019 is Keep Rock Island Beautiful Day. Proclamation, whereas Keep Rock Island Beautiful is a nonprofit organization dedicated to planning and implementing programs of education and awareness of litter control and recycling activities while promoting pride in Rock Island and collaborates with other nonprofit organizations with the Community Garden and Butterfly Garden, and also other community events. And whereas Keep Rock Island Beautiful is one of 1,200 affiliates of Keep America Beautiful, featuring over 3 million volunteers, participating in over 30,000 events in all 50 states. And whereas the City of Rock Island is proud of its natural resources and its neighborhoods and seeks to protect and improve our community through the action of citizens, schools, government, and businesses working together. And whereas the City of Rock Island has so recognized the important commitment to improve American communities through litter prevention, beautification, and solid waste management initiatives, and is committed to helping spread the word about the importance of volunteerism and motivate everyone in our communities to become stewards of the environment. And whereas Keep Rock Island Beautiful is coordinating its annual downtown cleanup on May 4th.
Now therefore, I, Mike Tomes, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 4th, 2019, Keep Rock Island Beautiful Day, and call upon our citizens to join in activities that promote responsible environmental stewardship and help us renew our commitment to building a better world today for our future generations. I know somebody's here to receive this.
Hi, my name is Jody Libby, and I am president of the Board of Keep Rock Island Beautiful. And I just wanted to update the city on our recent and upcoming events. Yesterday, or this past weekend, the Green Bush Group did a cleanup in anticipation of the NFL situation that was coming up. So they did that over the weekend. Thursday, Augustana College Sierra Club will be walking from Augustana to Whitey's, cleaning up along the route, and they have called and asked for coordination with Keep Rock Island Beautiful, so we've offered those services to them as well. Tomorrow, April 23rd, the City of Rock Island will be holding a ravine cleanup, and I have the supplies in the back end of my car to drop off to them in the morning. So I have met with Andy and Megan to coordinate that. May 4th is the downtown cleanup. We'll be meeting at the Keep Rock Island Beautiful office, 15th Street and 2nd Avenue. At 8:30, Jumers Casino is providing refreshments for all volunteers, and then we'll start cleaning up. We really encourage anybody and everybody to come and help us at that time. Also, May 4th at 1:00 PM, Broadway area is doing their cleanup, so we'll be shifting our supplies from downtown at the office to the Broadway cleanup. And then May 11th is the 11th Street cleanup, and we will also be providing supplies for that group. So, thank you so much for the proclamation. We really appreciate your support.
No problem. Thank you, and I will be there tomorrow morning helping the city carry the, with the ravine.
I want to add on there. I have the privilege of representing the Broadway neighborhood, and when I caught wind of their cleanup scheduled for the afternoon of May 4th, which is an awesome coincidence, one of my constituents said, "What about reaching out to the First Ward and organizing a Longview neighborhood cleanup for that same time? And we'll start on opposite sides and both clean towards 17th Street, which is the border between our neighborhoods, and then meet there and have a picnic or something." And so I'm happy to say that Alderman Clark and I have co-organized, and so we're going to be just doing that same thing of having both the Broadway neighborhood and the Longview neighborhoods working together to get to 17th Street and then meeting in the middle, so.
Okay, perfect, and I know I've heard from the Broadway group as far as dropping off supplies, so if you also need supplies, if you want to contact me.
I will do that.
Colleen can give you my number.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
A lot of litter cleaning up. It's awesome.
There it is. All right, item number nine.
Proclamation declaring the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, as Exchange Club of the Quad Cities Week.
Reads, whereas family, community, and nation are important core values in the lives of Americans, and whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of the nation's social problems, and that volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive city, state, and nation. And whereas the National Exchange Club, an American organization, is a group of volunteers unselfishly work together to make our communities better place to live through programs of service in Americanism, community service, youth activities, and its national project, the prevention of child abuse. And whereas the Exchange Clubs serve communities throughout the United States. For over 100 years, the first Exchange Club having been formed in Detroit, Michigan in 1911. And whereas the Exchange Club of the Quad Cities, an affiliate of the National Exchange Club and the Lincoln Land District of Exchange, is celebrating its 50th anniversary of providing sufficient and, sufficient, significant, okay, I can read here, and invaluable contribution to the citizens of the Quad City area. And now therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim May 5th through the 11th, 2019, as Exchange Club of the Quad City Week, and urge the citizens of Quad Cities to recognize and, recognize the past and ongoing contributions of the National Exchange Club to support the Exchange Club of the Quad Cities in their efforts.
Well, most people probably haven't heard of the Exchange Club, even though we've been around for 50 years. Exchange Club of the Quad Cities is one of 26 exchange clubs throughout Illinois and one of over 630 exchange clubs throughout the United States. And as it was said, that our primary goal is prevention of child abuse, and we do that by supporting the Child Abuse Council. And I, oh, and I forgot to tell you, my name's Bob Nixon, and I'm the president-elect for the upcoming year to be president, so, thank you very much.
You. Item number 10, hits close to home.
Proclamation declaring the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerks Week.
Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest amongst public servants, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and agencies of government at all, at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continue to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial county, and international professional organizations. And whereas is the most appropriate, appreciate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through the 11th, Municipal, Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Municipal Clerk Judith Gilbert and all municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exempl, exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So, do you want to go, you want to say something?
I could say it right here.
You can say it right here. Wonderful.
Does that mean she gets the week off?
No.
Too much to do. Well, I would just like to say thank you for the proclamation, Mayor and Council, and it is my honor and privilege to serve not only the council and staff of the City of Rock Island, but all of the residents of Rock Island with their needs with regards to municipal government. So thank you very much for that opportunity.
And thank you very much, Judith, for your service. You've done a wonderful job, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
All right, item number 11.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on a request from Sarah Zapata for a waiver of the signature requirement to secure a liquor license at 1831 3rd Avenue.
All right, close the regular meeting, open the public hearing. And I don't know if Sarah or Jose is here. I didn't see them, but.
Not here.
Not here. So is there anybody that would like to speak against this? Anybody out there that's like to speak against?
Anyone that wants to speak against the pancake house?
Yes. Is there anybody, really, good luck.
Don't see anyone.
Nope. Is anybody wants to speak in favor of this? Don't see anybody there either.
Mayor, I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
Wait, I had a question.
Oh.
Sorry.
Well, can we close the public hearing and have our discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Could do it either way. Close the public meeting.
Is there a second?
Move to second. Any discussion on that? Also, favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Now.
Move to waive the signature requirement is requested and move to recommend the Mayor Liquor Commissioner to approve the liquor license.
Second.
Move to second. Now is there any discussion?
I just had a question. Are they expanding their business hours at all, or is it staying the same?
At this point, the same, same.
Okay.
It's more for, they wanted to offer like limosas and Bloody Marys and when they were open, and then they do some catering, and now that they've expanded the physical size of it, they can do some banquets and that, so that's the purpose of it.
Okay. I'm about that.
Okay, it's great, great, great company. All right, so we'll do a roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Remember, I just, this is a recommendation to the City Council versus just an approval of it.
I'm sorry?
This is, what this does is the council recommending to the Liquor Commissioner to approve it. It's not actually approving the liquor license.
Right, because he has autonomous.
Correct.
Authority.
Correct.
But it is approving the waiver of the signature.
Approving the waiver and the signature. That's correct.
Just like we did last meeting for Savemore.
Correct. I think we got one next meeting, so. So, all right, item number 12.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on a request from Jose and Alicia Gomez for a special use permit to operate a landscaping business office, parking lot, and accessory equipment storage buildings at 1406, 1412, and 1416, 6th Avenue, zoned R4, 1 to 6 family residence district.
All right, like to close the regular meeting and open up public hearing? Is Jose or Alicia here? Yep. Would you like to come up?
Good evening, my name's Alicia Gomez.
Good evening.
And does anybody have any questions for me pertaining what we're proposing at 1416?
Could you give us just a brief summary for the folks listening at home? Because we are broadcasting live.
Um, well, we've owned and operated the business since 2004. Most recently, our last location was borderline Moline, Rock Island, over here on 46th Street, Rock Island. So we've outgrown that current location, and as all businesses do, at some point, expansion was in order, and we found this property that I was out one day and just happened to stumble upon, and I thought this would be a perfect location. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
It's a great problem to have, need to expand.
Exactly, and hopefully that will happen in the future, future.
James, you have a.
Just about the stipulations, the staff list, there are a number of things. Are you familiar with them?
I am.
And are all those okay with the way you want to operate your business?
Yes, we've been working very close with the city in order to come to the stipulations and move forward and working.
Thank you. You might want to pull the mic a little closer to your mouth.
There we go. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, so yes, I am aware of them.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, I do need to ask, is there anybody opposed to this? Is there anybody out there that's opposed to this? Is there anybody in favor of it that'd like to speak? Nobody in the audience today. Okay, well with that, I would close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the special use permit is recommended, subject to the stipulations as stated in the report, and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second. Moved to second. Is there any discussion?
I had one question about the fencing. I know that when I had a similar situation in the Green Bush neighborhood, there was the matter of the chain link fence versus a wooden fence. Was that part of the discussion? And we've come to a chain link fence? All right.
All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, item number 13.
A special ordinance allowing for the installation of a bus shelter for use by MetroLink in the city right of way on the east side of 9th Street at approximately 3705 9th Street.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 14.
A special ordinance allowing for a bus parking only, bus parking zone on the north side of the 9th Street entrance to Douglas Park.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance. Second. Second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 15.
Claims, I'll read the first three in one group. A, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $14,967.30 to A Plus Plumbing of Davenport, Iowa for a sewer lateral repair at 1517 9th Avenue. B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $164,000 to Fabtech Wastewater Solutions of O'Fallon, Missouri for the wastewater grit channel replacement project for services completed through March 26, 2019. And C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $117,727.48 to the Illinois Department of Transportation of Springfield, Illinois for construction costs for the 18th Avenue resurfacing 17th Street to 46th Street project.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items A through C.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ice, no nace, motion carried. And D, report from the public works department regarding payment number 13 and final in the amount of $57,049.97 to General Constructors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa for the Outfall 7 relocation project for services provided from October 1st, 2018 through March 29th, 2019.
Move to accept the report and authorize payment as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
I will be recusing myself from this vote due to the nature of my employment.
Roll call please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six ice, no nace, motion carried.
Item 16.
Claims for the weeks of April 5th through April 11th in the amount of $2,184,191.22 and April 12th through April 18th in the amount of $428,368.86 and payroll for the weeks of March 25th, 2019 through April 7th, 2019 in the amount of $1,472,025.7.
Move to allow the claims and payroll.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ice, no nace, motion carried.
Item 17.
ACH payments for the month of February 2019 in the amount of $2,209,436.50.
Move to approve the ACH payments.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ice, no nace, motion carried.
Item 18.
Purchase card claims for the period of January 29th, 2019 through February 26th, 2019 in the amount of $42,515.8.
Move to approve the purchase card claims.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ice, no nace, motion carried.
Item 19.
Report from the public works department regarding the emergency purchase of the remanufactured Waukesha engine from Kraft Power Corporation of Gaylord, Michigan in the amount of $42,500.
Move to approve the purchase as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ice, no nace, motion carried.
Item 20.
Report from general administration regarding an intergovernmental agreement for the construction of an integrated P25 emergency radio system.
Move to approve the intergovernmental agreement as recommended and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second. Move to second, any discussion?
Two, two things I wanted to say about this, first, who was involved with the drafting of the intergovernmental agreement? Who drafted that?
Oh, it was, Dave could probably jump in, but it was mainly.
Kathy Schwett mainly from the county and then consulting with my office, me personally, and then also with Maureen Riggs from the city of Moline. And then we would have periodic meetings to discuss what we thought might want to be added or subtracted and so forth.
There were a lot of meetings and a lot of revisions, it was quite lengthy.
And the reason I asked that is because it's abundantly clear that that was a work product of a considerable amount of hours and it really is an impressive document. I think it shows, or it could serve really as a, as a model, structure for complex intergovernmental purchases and mutual operation of sophisticated equipment. I mean, it really is a very impressive document and so I wanted to commend everyone who was involved with that as well as the deliberations, because almost all of that work happened behind the scenes, I mean, really none of that played out so much here. But my, so my second question, or really my question, that was really a compliment, is from, from our perspective though, do we view this as a sort of a staff neutral intergovernmental agreement or do we expect any sort of, you know, potential furloughs or layoffs or anything like that affecting existing staff with this agreement?
No, no, we don't.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question about the financial part of it, I'm referring to page 14 and 15 of the report. We'll be making payments for our share of the system over three years. I'm just curious what fund or funds that will be coming out of.
Stephanie, you can come up and answer that, but it would be some are out of public works, there's some radios purchased, there's just a small number six, I believe, and the rest out of different public safety funds.
And that brings up a good point, also the financial professionals were also consulted, so the lawyer should not take all of the credit and/or the blame, because a very important part was to talk with the folks that say, how are we going to pay for this? And Stephanie did a lot of work on contributing to that and reviewing the document and making suggested edits.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
Yes, and definitely very complicated to take an RFP like that and split it between states, between counties, and then determine, you know, what portion each community and a layer of government would contribute. But this type of expense would definitely be a general fund governmental expense, it is related in small part to public works but mostly to police and fire. The overall portion that the city will pay did end up coming in much less than we thought it would and over a prolonged period of time, which was certainly helpful in, in planning how we will finance this, it was not budgeted in 2019. So, management is reviewing expenditure trends in 2019, looking for opportunities for savings to fund a portion of this. So, it is our hope to finance this within operations and do some internal budget transfers without impacting services to citizens. And then we'll figure it out going forward for the next three years.
Thank you, Stephanie.
This also reaches across the river too, there's a collaboration with Scott County and Davenport and Bettendorf and the Arsenal. Once again, everybody will be on the same page with this and so that's very important also, especially Rockon County is the one that's really making the, a major upgrade for themselves, that will be able to communicate everybody together consistently, so it's a, it's a great quad city project.
Is there, is there any thought on, can we use this model to buy VAC trucks, for example? I mean, is it really necessary that every single city have their own VAC truck or whatever? The case, software, I know we've talked about all of the different types of software that the city purchases, could we explore this for GIS mapping software for all of us to use?
Typically, software is a government price, Tim could jump in there, but it's the same way, but we have looked at before vehicles, it's hard to get everyone to agree on the same vehicle they want, but certainly we've tried. So, it is a model we can use and we do talk about it all the time, joint purchasing, we do quite a bit of joint purchasing.
Yeah, I know we'd use it through bi-state.
Matter of fact, we just did though, a joint deal with GIS last week, week before, they were flying over around the quad cities taking pictures and it was shared, but by, once again, I'll call it the big seven, Sylvus, Rock Island, Rock Island, Moline, East Moline, Davenport, Bettendorf, the counties, we just shared that information or cost, which dropped dramatically from the last time we did it. And so that was a joint collaboration amongst the quad city cities.
Yeah, I mean, in the memo here, we got the Scott Emergency Communications Center Board and the Rock Island County Emergency Telephone System Board, they formed a working group, you know, we should consider soliciting, I guess that's sort of the bi-state, right? But we should replicate this for many more things that we do, so that's all my comment is. Thanks. Keep doing it. Sorry, Tim.
Breaks his heart. All right, we need a roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ice, no nace, motion carried.
Thank you, item 21.
Report from the public works department regarding a project development agreement with Johnson Controls Incorporated of Arlington Heights, Illinois for the development of a performance contract for energy capital improvement projects.
Move to enter into the project development agreement as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Again, I do want to commend our city manager and the mayor and everybody else who was behind the scenes in directing this work, our public works director, both past and present, because this is definitely a handoff project from Larry to Mike, and to our sustainability commission in doing the exhaustive reviews, you know, and I got to say with, I know representatives from Johnson's Controls are here, for them to have come out on top of this process, it was an extremely competitive, I think, request for proposals, some top tier companies came to this city with some incredible expertise and knowledge about what it is we need to do to prepare for the future and to control our costs for energy. So, I am, I am super genuinely excited that this is something that, I know it's been worked through, through several planning sessions from the council level, and to see that sort of big picture thinking coming down to this level is, is awesome. So, thank you to everyone, again, for doing the grind, the real work here, appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Oh, quick question to whoever wants to field this from the, the committee, task force or Johnson Controls. This is very complex and there's a lot we don't know yet, it still has to be studied. But I'm wondering, given the estimates that are in the report, if there's a vague idea of what the payback time is until we get our expenditures back again from the savings that we're going to make?
So, I do have all of that, I could ship you, it runs, you know, difference on how we, we finance it, but anywhere between, and what we end up doing, obviously, 15 years is approximate.
That's, I'm just looking for a ballpark.
And each, each component is different, one might be four years, one might be 17 years and our goal is to meld them all together for the.
Well, there's a lot of variables, but 15 years is a good estimate.
And why echo Josh Alderman Ship's agreement in terms of a performance contract, I won't be supporting this particular bid for the reasons that we've heard in study session multiple times and the three bids we heard, with this bid at 17 million being significantly higher than the lowest bid, we currently have an issue going with the bid right now of overcharging. And then also, that we discussed in study session, the failure to disclose ongoing lawsuits of this company with a fellow municipality that currently is dealing with the same very issue that they're proposing with water meters, so I won't be supporting this bid.
I want to thank the commission though, at the same time, we got one representative here that I know of, of course, the city employees, but, oh, over here, yep, so thank you very much, didn't see you sitting back there, but their time and input in this, their expertise, you know, a lot of different people, but Eric with Mid-America and the Arsenal and, and there was, it was great input and questions by the committee. You know, one, one day they had presentation, it was like six hours or something like that plus, and that's quite a commitment for the private sector to, to give up, and so thank you for them. I guess they did such a great job, we're going to have more projects in the future that we're going to have you work with.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you very much for that, those efforts.
Did Johnson want to address what Alderman, Geenan had to say at all?
So, I can address it really quick if you like, one thing to remember, this isn't actually a bid, it, they're estimates and until you do the, the final analysis, you don't know exactly what the numbers are going to be, but.
I was more concerned with the lawsuit, if there's a, I'm su, if there's someone who's being sued.
Yeah, they can probably, the lawsuit had to do with Badger meters that were installed and after several years, they were experiencing problem with Badger meters. It was a specific type of Badger meter, we've had.
We addressed this in study session, apparently they addressed it all day Friday, I don't think we need to hear from them now, I mean.
I think they, I think they should have the right to speak if they want.
Okay. I think there was something last week in the lawsuit too, I heard.
It was specific to the Badger meters after several years had malfunctioned and Badger is a reputable company, I don't know the reason for that, we have, I think most of our meters are still Badgers, aren't they? Or not? Quite a few.
It's part of the process.
Certainly.
I didn't answer the question correctly.
Several thousand.
All right.
Mike, can you come up here and just give the public an overview on what this very big project is? You know, just sort of give us a explanation of what we're voting on and why staff and our, and our sustainability tasks force, I believe unanimously made this recommendation, right?
That's correct.
All right, so give us some backstory here.
So, I took over this from the previous public works director, this was, the initial proposal was done back in October of 18 and I took over first of December of 18. And so, basically what this contract does is it looks at ways to complete projects in municipal buildings, it has several components of it, water, wastewater, solar, street lighting, and so it's, it finds ways through energy savings to fund this project. So, to take the work, the load off the general fund and pay for that, pay for those improvements over a 15 to 20 year timeframe. And so, the project has a guaranteed savings, there's, there's a state legislation through the compiled statutes that if you come into an agreement with a performance contract, they do have to guarantee those savings and so there's legislation in place for that. So, the biggest part of this project is, as far as savings goes, is in the water and wastewater side of things, specifically with our treatment plants and water meters. And so, in, in December, I met with the task force committee for myself for the first time, Eric Westfall is with Mid-American Energy, we have Shirley Johnson in the back, she's with the Corps of Engineers, and then Jeff Nelson, who was with MetroLink, could not make it tonight, there was also a representative, Matt Kaler, he's with IMAG, Olivia Dorothy, and Christopher Strunk from Augustana, that was the task force committee.
Does IMAG have a contract with Johnson and Controls on this project?
They do not.
I thought that's why he excused himself from the task force.
They had done some work, preliminary work on this.
Okay.
And so he recused himself for that reason.
You talking about Matt Kaler?
But you mentioned him, so I don't.
Yeah, he, he, he had to step out of the Sustainability Task Force Committee because of him working with the contractor. And so, I got, we met with the task, task force committee and then we compiled a list of questions, we had 24 specific questions for each contractor and they submitted those questions ahead of the interviews, the interview process was part of the initial proposal that was submitted back in October. Things got delayed because of the transition from public works director. And so then we had a eight hour open meeting with all contractors, they had approximately two hours to answer our questions, they could give a presentation if they'd like, most, most of them did, they answered our questions one by one, we were able to ask additional questions if we wanted to and it was a very in-depth process and selection. And then that day after that meeting, we got together with staff and the task force And then, that day after that meeting, we got together with staff and the task force, and we felt very confident recommending Johnson Controls to the city council.
All right, so, two points of summary. One, basically, the idea of this is that, to simplify things, we're gonna go around and change all of the light bulbs and do all these efficiency improvements. Obviously, it's far more than light bulbs. I'm simplifying, right? But we're gonna be doing a bunch of efficiency improvements to our municipal properties, and then because of the savings that we get by increasing our efficiency, we're gonna be able to invest that in other capital things like the HVAC system in the library, something like that.
That's correct.
That's the idea here. Okay, and then.
Original part will be to pay it off first, and then savings, and then.
Right, right. Contractors have proposed to us.
Right. I had a second point, but I forgot what it was. But I'll continue rolling along here. Was there any, oh, my second thing, I just remembered it. So, this is just like the RFQ that we put out for the parking garage engineering analysis, where it's not necessarily a bid. They're not bidding on, like, we're gonna build your street for ten thousand dollars. They're saying, these are our qualifications, and we are selecting the firm that we believe to be the most qualified. Is that similar?
That's correct. The initial proposal did not request a cost to be submitted with that. However, most contractors did.
Sure.
And so, we did not base our decisions solely on a cost factor. It was more who could do the work, or who we felt could do the work in a timely manner professionally, and, you know, again, we feel it was mostly water and wastewater scope of work, and Johnson Controls came out on top for that area.
So, you looked at past records with their work with wastewater and meters and all that good stuff?
I did several in-depth reference checks in Illinois.
What about Ohio?
I did not do one in Ohio.
Because that was the lawsuit that we were referring to.
Was the matter of local, okay, so, sorry, to continue summarizing. This is, basically, the first step here is that we are agreeing to allow them to do an engineering analysis of the efficiency improvements, right? So, this, the first thing that we're doing is saying, okay, go ahead and look at in-depth, where can we make improvements on the efficiencies of our municipal properties? It's not necessarily saying that we're, this, you know, here's the agreement to replace this light bulb. It's just the first phase of this is, here's, do a thorough engineering review of all of our municipal property to make sure, to see where we can make improvements. That's the first step here, right?
That's correct. The development, project development agreement goes over all those scopes, and they basically do a technical audit of our city billing for all of our energy billing from Mid-American. They do an in-depth analysis of our water meter billing, and so on and so forth for every component of this project. And then, they come back with a recommendation of projects to do and the amount of savings, and then we, as the city of Rock Island, can look at those areas, determine on which areas we want to do. What we're agreeing to tonight is them to move forward with designing those projects, putting the effort into the investigative audit portion of it, and come back with a recommendation.
And we're gonna pay them six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do that?
No, we are not. That cost is if we were to move forward tonight, or the council were to move forward tonight with that agreement, and we would, down the road, decide not to move forward with the project completely. So, that cost of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we move forward tonight, we decide not to go forward later. And that cost, if we do move forward, will be moved into the entire scope of the project, and that would be paid with that, approximately seventeen million dollars.
And from our professional staff and the, I don't know if I want to use environmental professionals that make up our task force, they're confident that when we get to the point of having the thorough vetting of all of our stuff, it's gonna make sense to do these projects. We're gonna see a savings.
The way I understand it, and the way it's written in the agreement, I believe, is that, once the development agreement is, or I'm sorry, the final contract is put together, the city of Rock Island and Johnson Controls has to agree to those savings. If we don't agree to those savings, we'll have to have some other conversations. I've never done it. This is new to me. But, so, if we, so there's operational savings. So, we have an old boiler here in this building. It needs replaced. We spent a lot of time maintaining that building. How much savings is that? How much time do we put into that piece of equipment every day? They want to come to a cost figure for that savings and apply that to the project.
Right.
And it's a real savings.
Right.
So, just tonight, I had to call James Jordan here, because it was very hot, so I had to come in here and we had to get the air conditioning going. So, there's things like that.
Yeah. My question was basically getting to, so if we have to pay six hundred some thousand dollars if we decide to not move forward, it's good for me to be assured that it's likely that we're gonna go forward because the needs are obvious for the city of Rock Island, that there's plenty of opportunity to increase the efficiencies of our systems. If all of our buildings were, you know, gold lead standard, it might not make sense to do this because we already are at ninety percent efficient or whatever. So, that's what I was getting at.
And the agreement actually states that actual costs incurred, so whatever they've moved forward in design with their engineers, they would have to provide documentation. They did submit some labor rates, because we questioned that figure, too. And they provide us with documentation to, that we felt comfortable with that number.
Okay.
Mid-American Energy did some energy audits to verify some of these things, to kind of acid test, and saw some savings and everything else. The water meters, a lot of the water meters are reaching their total life expenditure of fifteen to twenty years. And so, there's the greatest savings, I think, are in the water meters.
Right.
Well, all three vendors showed significant savings, so we're all confident that there will be savings to move forward.
And so, then the next phase of this, it's not like, so the whoever, the firm that we select tonight may not be the one that's actually the one out there replacing water meters, or whatever the actual project is that we decide to go through with, if we go through with it, there's subcontracting.
It would be a subcontractor of Johnson Controls.
That wasn't my understanding when we had the study sessions, where Johnson Controls and their proposal to us actually was picking up the maintenance of the contract, where some of the other ones were gonna bid out the maintenance of the water meters, for example.
Is that accurate?
Everyone is going to bid the manual, you know, subcontract, the manual labor portion of this. Johnson Controls could jump in if you want them to, but, so the installation of the meter, any, you know, photovoltaic solar arrays, the change out of the LED system is all gonna be contracted with a local firm.
And then, the maintenance of it, or maintenance contracts? Are there maintenance contracts with any of these?
There aren't any maintenance contracts that I'm aware of.
I mean, if we replace our water meters, our public works department is gonna take care of our water meters, correct?
They're under warranty.
Okay.
Obviously.
The subcontracting could be with the city to do the work.
What's up? I'm sorry. Johnson Controls is, they're competitively bidding.
Yep.
Each part of their work.
So, they will be bidding on their work?
They will be putting it out for bids.
Putting it out for bid.
My name's Joe Armelli. I'm with Johnson Controls, just to make sure. I don't know if that's standard, but yes, we will, part of the whole development process. It's a little bit more than an engineering study.
Yeah.
It's gonna, it's gonna design it, it's gonna put it out to bid to multiple contractors. We talked about a number of local contractors that we want to offer that opportunity for the work for, get it back, review collaboratively with, you know, the public works team and so forth, and then, and then present the presentations to you. As far as maintenance goes, that's something that we can discuss as far as timing and how frequently, or if at all, that's something the city wants.
Well, and I just want to point out, in my opinion, you know, this is the way that a municipality should cautiously and thoroughly enter into a large ambitious project. You know, and I contrast this to what has happened in the past, in terms of the amount of public transparency that's been involved with this, the number of people outside the council who've been involved with this determination process. And this sum of money, I think it's important to say that the performance contract, it says, will be no more than six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, as you've indicated, Mike, there's gonna be some proof as to what work's been done. At the same time, it's totally unreasonable for us to expect that any company would go, as far as what you're describing, to have the staff and the personnel involved with making this project basically turnkey ready to go. Here's the contractors, here's the scope of the efficiencies, here's what needs to be replaced, here's, here's all the work that we've done back and forth in talking about the real savings. So, we're dealing with real numbers and not stuff that's just made up, and at the end of the day, that's a real work product. So, if we tell you guys and we say, let's go, let's go through with all of this, and, oh, by the way, you're done with that now, and we don't want to move forward, it's totally unreasonable to expect that we would get that for free. There's a cost to that, a significant cost to that. I mean, it takes, you know, we're paying for the expertise, we're paying for the knowledge. So, again, I think that this is packaged in a way that, like we've seen from our community and economic development department, the way our economic development proposals are put together, that payments aren't put out for some of these projects until you've got a certificate of occupancy, right? So, we're protecting ourselves, at the same time, we're making investments, we're moving forward. So, I think that's important to point out.
I had a question. You mentioned local businesses. What is your firm's practice regarding your subcontractors? Do you use local? Do you ship people in?
Local as much as possible. We've, like I said earlier, we talked with the task force during our interview about a number of firms that we have worked with. So, we have a local Moline branch. Jeff's here attending from there. Been in the business for seventy years, do a lot of work locally, and so, we have a, we have a pretty good relationship with many of the local vendors, and so, they're certainly gonna get an opportunity to bid that work, and we hope to see that that's where it goes.
One, I was gonna bring up responsible.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment real quick that I think it, from my perspective, I think it would be very appropriate, I think, for you guys to consider the language that we have in our responsible bidder ordinance, to take a good look at that, to understand the philosophy and the approach that we've tried to take to our contracting, and to mirror that in this process as well.
Certainly.
And that's not to diminish, I'm sure, the standards that you guys have to review your subcontractors, because obviously, the work that they perform is a reflection of your, you know, work as well, in a sense. You don't hire someone and say, well, you know, we want to hire the right people, so.
Absolutely. We'll take that coaching to heart and work with Mike to make sure we do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My major concern comes with the added increase to the end user on their water consumption on their utility bill. Certainly, most of the efficiency is gonna be added revenue from the city, collected from the users of our water. And that's the huge thing with me, and it would seem to me that we're buying it, we're, the taxpayers right now are already buying a twenty-four million dollar, maybe I'm wrong, water filtration system, and then pile another seventeen million onto that, and that's, that's the, the, that's where the revenue's coming from. And it's coming from all the residents in Rock Island, or users, so that's where my concern is.
Right. Of course, it's potentially from water that they are using and are not getting billed for.
Correct, but they've already, if no one ever moved out and everyone ever moved in, it's always been paid for by the people that are using it, and it's a very robust fund, because we do pay a lot for our water, and it's great water, we do, and our staff does a great job. But this is going to have a multiple of magnitude on the property, or on the utility bills for the residents of Rock Island.
The way I see it, Steve, is, I mean, property owners in Rock Island are either gonna pay on their water bill to represent an actual consumption of the water that they use, or they're gonna pay for it on their property taxes being raised to fund the capital improvements that.
That's not so. That is not so. Right now, you get a water bill, and maybe it's not equ, the only thing you could argue is that it might not be equitable between my house and your house, because I have two people and you have four, and you might be using the same exact amount of water, but I might be getting charged the same amount you are because the meters are different. But when you come down to it, there are thirty-nine thousand people buying water in the city of Rock Island, and it's gonna cost us twenty-four million dollars to, for a new water filtration plant or the next, however long the bond was. So, if you divide, calculate, and divide all that out, that should be the number that we're paying for water. And not, just because you can put new meters in and you can accurately measure new meters, may not be the right way to go. Someone's gonna pay.
The other thing to remember is that most of our meters now are approaching twenty years old, which is near the end of their service life, so we're gonna have to replace the meters anyway in the next several years. So, we are gonna, however we do this, we're gonna get new water meters.
All three, all three, all three contracts had water meters. This one.
Because that's where the money's at. Show me the money, baby.
Again, I'll.
That's where the money's coming from. That's where the savings is coming from.
It isn't all from water. Water is only a portion of this, so you need to remember, it isn't seventeen million dollars on people's water bills.
It didn't have the water in it, but it's gonna, and it has to and all of that, so.
I have a question for our finance director. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should we have this meeting next week?
So, I, at the beginning of us exploring this idea, I raised the question of, I mean, we're gonna have to pay for the upfront costs for these improvements, right? And I understand that there might be unique budgeting practices or something, you know, unique systems at play here, but one of my concerns is that I don't want our bonding rating to be affected by this, by taking on more debt short-term, even though we have a savings long-term. It's still a short-term debt, if I am understanding things correctly. So, from the finance department's side, are we gonna have our bonding rating drop because we're taking on this project? I understand that it may drop for other reasons, but this reason specifically, is this gonna impact that?
Well, I don't have a crystal ball.
Yeah.
But, you know, part of talking to the rating agencies, and, you know, there's so many different components that go into our bond rating, is telling the story. And with this project, it's a good story, and a lot of documentation behind the reason why one of the options for financing this project could be debt on the books, and, you know, being able to say that the funding source is, you know, is savings. And especially being here in Illinois and performance contracting being a statute on the books of the state of Illinois, they would understand this. So, I feel very confident that I could explain the story, if that's the avenue that we choose. It's not the only avenue for financing this project, and so, when we get to that point, and we know which funds are affected and how the project is laid out, you know, we'll have some options to choose from.
And so, you said that the funding source is savings. All three of the proposed contracts in front of us, that would be a financing option. All three said you could finance this through savings?
Yes.
Okay.
For sure, and that's part of performance contracting. One thing I did want to mention, if you don't mind me just interjecting a moment, is on the, on the water fund improvements in particular, is that it's my hope that while our bills, as we're all residents of the city of Rock Island, you know, is, there's a possibility that our, that our water use will be measured more accurately, and therefore, our bills might, you know, go up, is that it's our hope in the finance department is to add customer service improvements, so an added value to the billing. For one, we'll be able to get meter readings much more easily and much more frequently, and that's, you know, I sit right outside the customer service division, and I hear those kinds of questions all day long, whether they're on the phone or someone's up at the counter, and, you know, and we have to say, well, we read your meter three months ago. You know, or perhaps we didn't actually get a meter reading three months ago, it was six months ago, and their last bill was based on an estimate. And so, to be able to have accurate meter readings more timely, to be able to alert customers to water leaks, to a toilet, that people just don't pay attention to that little itty-bitty sound, whether they hear it or not, or ignore it, I think is going to be a huge improvement, and, you know, can we then move to more frequent billing? I think a lot of our residents would really benefit from monthly billing, as opposed to getting a big bill every three months, not always so easy to budget for that. Not saying we're gonna change the billing frequency, but it will be much more possible when we don't have meter readers walking the streets of the, you know, the city of Rock Island in the way that they do now. So, I'm hoping that we can bring some benefits to, through this project.
The other thing to remember is that the money stays within the water fund for the water meters. So, additional revenue now means that rate increases in the future can be eliminated or reduced. So, it isn't as if we're gonna take this money and spend it somewhere else. It stays within that water fund. So, it comes back again to lower rates in the future if we have more accurate readings.
Well, and, you know, to Alderman Talon Air's point, I mean, we're building a brand-new state-of-the-art water filtration facility because our current one was built and has been in operations since nineteen oh eight, I think. And so, you know, these things have to get paid for, one way or another, and to go the route of a performance contract here, it's a. route of a performance contract here, is a very innovative way to do it, when cash, liquid cash is not available to pay for every single one thing that needs to be done, but we can actually do more through this financing mechanism than we could otherwise, and ideally without putting so much stress on the bond rating. So, this, all of this is going to have to be paid for. It's just a matter of, do we wait? And every year that we wait, everything gets more expensive, labor costs, equipment costs, and then we risk equipment failures and things like that, and then we go into emergency bidding, everything has to be paid for.
Pay for it, lower costs, hopefully.
Yep.
Reducing carbon footprint.
Yep.
Which people should be happy with, is another thing. So, that's, we're look-forward thinking, and trying to save the citizens' money in the future.
One thing to comment on the total cost, too, again, you know, the costs are just estimate now, but the reason, the number from Johnson Controls were, was higher, was because they, they put a significant amount more effort into the wastewater side, many more improvements. If we look at it line item by line item, water metering, City Hall, RIFAC, Central Library, Central Fire, Martin Luther King Center, building lighting, streetlights, and look at those items that are apples to apples, they actually came out cheaper than any of the other vendors.
And two years ago, at goal-setting, I think it came out of us that we wanted solar, and what has changed in these proposals, which again, I'm voting against this one, is that solar now, on this one, is becoming a third-party, we'll just give you an evaluation.
Actually, all vendors said that at the, at the meeting. What all vendors told us was, we don't know what the climate is going to be like when we get ready to install solar, there may be other incentives that aren't available now, we don't know what incentives will be available. Everyone gave us the same information, all three vendors, but Johnson can...
At the study session?
No, because things change now. This is at the...
The meeting I asked to be at, that Friday meeting?
That's Friday.
That you said I shouldn't be at?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't hear that update, sorry.
Yep, and they can tell you that, they all said that, you know, you have to see at that time what solar incentives are out there. I will say that Johnson Controls was able to answer the most in-depth solar questions. We've got someone from Mid-American who can speak to that, if the council would like to hear that. They had the most expertise on their staff, and had the most lengthy portion of solar in their presentation, so we're confident they are in the best position for solar.
All right, I think we're ready for a vote.
Let's do it.
Okay. Rule call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
No.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
No.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
No.
Clark.
Nay.
Nay?
Yes, no.
Three ayes, four nays. Two, three, four. Motion did not pass.
Okay, very disappointed in that, that's for sure. Unable to proceed with a very futuristic savings for the city. Disappointed. Item twenty-two.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a five-year extension of the lease agreement with De Soto Community Artists for space located at twenty-three, twenty-four, Third Avenue.
Move to approve the terms of the lease agreement as recommended and authorize execution of the lease agreement by the city manager, subject to any city attorney minor modifications.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Rule call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker. Ship. Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-three.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a five-year extension of the lease agreement with Quad Cities Wood Turners Incorporated for space located at twenty-three, twenty-four, Third Avenue.
Move to approve the terms of the lease agreement as recommended and authorize execution of the lease agreement by the city manager, subject to any city attorney minor modifications.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-four.
Report from the Finance Department regarding a mutual settlement agreement and release with Thomas E. Golf and Sandra Negus of Bluegrass, Iowa.
Move to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and release as recommended, subject to minor attorney modifications, authorize the disposal of the houseboat, and authorize the write-off of amounts due from Thomas E. Golf.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Think it's a bad idea. My point is, there should be a contract where they owe for it, you know, go after them or not, but I don't see why you'd want to do that.
Okay, rule call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
No.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Item twenty-five.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a special ordinance ceding the city's two thousand nineteen private activity volume bonding cap to the Quad Cities Regional Economic Development Authority.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-six.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a resolution designating areas of the city as deteriorated or deteriorating.
Move to adopt the resolution as written.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
I just want to thank Chandler and Colleen for coming to the Green Bush Neighborhood Meeting this past week, last week, whenever that was, I don't know, they all blur together, but that, I thought that that was really well-attended. You did a wonderful job explaining why we're calling their neighborhood deteriorating, not that fun, but this is going to be good stuff. So, thank you very much for listening to my request, and getting out in front of things, and getting into the neighborhoods.
Could we show the public at home where these areas are?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That's two-thirds of them.
Randy, do you want to say what the neighborhoods are, what wards they're in, where they're located at?
Yeah, there's another map, too. So, that's the Green Bush, part of Keystone, which is like location B, and then if you go to the next page, that would be the, you know, I don't know the...
Old Chicago?
No, it's not quite Old Chicago. It is Douglas Park in the area of the Longview Neighborhood and west of there.
Right. We seen it in study session or whatever, but the people sitting at home need to know, because it might be their, their house next door.
And if it is their house, they potentially have the opportunity to get some assistance from the city to pay to fix up their home, so...
Potentially.
It depends on whether, it depends on their household income, but, yeah.
Okay.
If they're, if they're below the median LMI, right, median income, or whatever the proper term is, they should potentially be eligible for some assistance from the city to address code violations. So, if their porch has fallen off, they might be able to get some help.
So, Randy, they're basically in what wards, and what wards are they not in?
Well, they're in their first ward, fifth ward, and sixth ward.
Thank you. None in the second. Thank you.
No.
All right, rule call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-seven.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year two thousand nineteen budget, recommending increasing the water fund five oh one expenditures by eight million, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars for the water filtration facility project.
Move to approve the budget adjustment as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Rule call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-eight.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for installation of a handicap parking space at fifteen, twenty-seven, twenty-ninth and a half Street.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer it to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second. Move to second, any discussion?
Rule call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-nine.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for installation of a handicap parking space at eight thirty, Twenty-first Street.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer it to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second. Move to second, any discussion?
Rule call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-nine.
Thirty.
Thirty.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for installation of a handicap parking space at five oh six, Sixth Street.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer it to the city attorney for an ordinance. Second. Move to second, any discussion?
Rule call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item thirty-one.
Report from the mayor regarding a reappointment and appointments to the Rock Island Public Library Board.
Move to approve the reappointment and appointments as recommended. Second. Move to second. The three individuals are renomination or appointment of Udale Watts, new appointment was Deb Freiburger, Freiburg, and...
Jenny Swanson.
Yep, yep. Council-elect Jenny Swanson. For those people who want to know. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item thirty-two.
Report from the city clerk regarding requests from El Patron Express for outdoor entertainment with sound amplification, outdoor sale and consumption of alcohol, and outdoor sale and consumption of food for their Cinco de Mayo event in their parking lot on Saturday, May fourth, two thousand nineteen, from four PM to eleven PM at thirty-eight fifty Blackhawk Road, Suite H five and H seven.
Move to approve the request as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor and food license regulations, and subject to being shut down early if complaints are received.
Second. Move to second, any discussion?
I have one question. I'm in favor of this, but they don't own the parking lot, do they? So, is there any reason council needs to know that the owner of the parking lot is in agreement with this? Or is that not part of our, end of the, the deal?
Well, I would think it would be a matter of what, I'm not sure how much of the property they lease or don't lease, but certainly, they would want to make sure with their landlord that they have access to the portion that they're going to cordon off.
This landlord owns the parking lot.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding.
Well, that would be, we're just approving the actual ability to have the event with the outdoor sales, they would have to have permission to go in the parking lot, unless they, they may lease that section of the parking lot, and they can use it as they see fit, I really don't know.
I don't know.
It's not a question we've ever asked.
Well, I'm asking.
I don't, we don't, we don't ask that question, that's the answer.
Let's vote.
Rule call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item thirty-three.
Report from the city clerk regarding a sound amplification permit application from CCKMA for a fundraiser event to be held at Sunset Marina on Saturday, June twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, from six PM to ten PM.
Move to approve the sound amplification permit as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just one quick question. They filled out their form, and they list Sunset Marina as the location.
And that is correct.
It's actually going to be at the marina.
Yes, it's, it's actually a boat poker run. So, they start at Sunset Marina in the morning, and then they go make their stops at other marinas, and then they come back to Sunset Marina for the evening entertainment, or whatever.
Thank you. You've done some homework since I talked to you earlier.
So, for clarification, can you tell us who CCKMA is?
Pick my ass.
Okay.
Put it in the minutes.
She's putting it in the minutes, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Rule call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
You just had to make me say that, didn't you? Spaghettius.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
All right, other business.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Just a couple of real quick things. We were not in session last week. It was not a council meeting week, but I received an email, I think we all got it, from Wayne Scherer regarding the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and I just wanted to mention that that was the fourteenth through the twentieth of April and is in recognition of our telecommunicators that handle thousands of calls, emergency and non-emergency, for our police, fire, and EMS services. So, in honor of the dispatchers who provide that vital service, I just wanted to bring that up. We weren't, we weren't in session last week to mention it then. Secondly, there's a lot of cleanups going on. It's spring, and that's a good thing. I'm going to mention the Eleventh Street cleanup, May eleventh. If anybody's interested, it's going to be held, let's see, from, I think, eight to about noon. If you want more information, contact the Illinois Iowa Independent Living Center in Rock Island or Friendship Manor. Thank you.
Okay. I have one also that was handed out tonight, May the fourth, which we know there's other things going on, but this is a men's march from City Hall here down to the courthouse, then turns and goes to the new police station, then it goes over to the church where the Young Man's Memorial is at. It's May the fourth, and it starts at noon and it ends at approximately one o'clock. I imagine they've got the permits to cross the streets. Is that correct? It was handed out.
If they're on the sidewalk, they don't, they don't need to, any permits, only if they're blocking the street. So, they don't need a permit for that.
Okay. So, it is May the fourth, and they're going to the memorial bench there at Church of Peace.
Okay. Anything else out there?
I just, yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's here. I look out and I see two new aldermen-elect. We just made a pretty huge decision here. I'm not saying I've changed my mind, but I think I want to make a motion to reconsider and with, with the caveat to table that decision for a month to get the three, in the next meeting, there'll be three new aldermen here in two weeks. That's a lot.
Woman, too.
I'm, I did not mean for saying alderman, meaning not including you. I apologize if that councilwoman. However, it's been a failure on my part. I won't change my mind on the vote, but if any of my other, the other ones that were on my side of the vote, they can vote this down, but I'd like to make a motion to reconsider that to a later date with. I'm, I'm listening to the, I'm watching for your lead on that.
Yeah, no, I think we haven't, we haven't closed, I mean, we're still in session in the meeting. I think that you would be allowed to do that. If you get a second, you have to go through the procedure, just like any, another motion.
Well, that's the ask. I mean, if I close the meeting, I can't do it.
Right, right. Correct. And so Judith was looking at me, and I was explaining to her I thought that you could do it, so I was not trying to interrupt you.
Could you restate your motion, please?
To reconsider the item, and I don't have my computer up which one it is, to reconsider it, twenty, item twenty.
Twenty-one.
Number twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Item twenty-one. Well, we might want to think about, we have to be able to make the motion, the people that, the four of the.
I will second your motion to reconsider twenty-one. Would date certain?
To, and you got to think about it a little bit, how much, because there's clearly.
All three of the new aldermen will, should have the fair chance to hear from, you know, all of the three that proposed a project development. I have no problem with the project development agreement.
Well, I think, I think what, I think what could happen there is, and I, and I trust, I truly trust this management team one hundred percent. They, if, if you want that to be in order to switch to be more fair on that other end or not, but I, I heard a lot of questions, I thought, I, I thought it was going to be a six to one vote tonight, and I was going to be against it. I didn't go up against anybody else. I, but for my reason, because it was not answered, and I don't know if they can, if those folks will be able to answer, how much is my water bill going to be five years from now in a percentage with average inflation? I bet it's going to be doubled just on the consumption of water. It's going to be, because the, the meat's got to come from somewhere. However, I, I think that it might not be my choice tonight to make that on the citizens of Rock Island. This is why I want to make that motion.
So, the motion been moved to second. Are we picking a specific date?
Well, can we make a motion to reconsider the motion, and then after voting to reconsider, make a motion to table it?
I think when, when the problem with tabling is we, generally, the best procedure is to choose a date certain, so, yes, postpone to a date certain.
Can you do that both in the same motion?
You can do the reconsideration, and then you do the postponement to a date certain, yes.
All right, so I've seconded the motion to reconsider.
So, then, if they have, if no one's changed, if I haven't changed anyone else's mind on the other side, it would be.
Well, first, we got to call the vote to reconsider.
Absolutely. I was just trying to make that clear that.
All right. Roll call, please.
Discussion?
Excuse me, discussion. I thought there was discussion going on.
I was discussing.
Yeah, Steve, Steve was. I'm kind of different than that. I believe the new people that are coming in here should have that on their plate, and it gives them time to look at the three proposals and that, rather than us, the three outgoing ones, say something about it. That's their job now. We will never vote on it again, so why are we even, what Steve's talking about in Alderman Parker, they will be the new alderman and alderwoman sitting up in there. Let them do their homework and let them bring it up, and you'll still be here. You can have all your discussion that you want, but I cannot vote for that, Steve.
Okay. No, I.
Call the question.
So, oh, can you, do the cert, date certain after that?
Yeah, yes. Depending on the outcome.
Are we done with discussion?
Well, I don't think so, because I think we got to know, I got to know, because I'm not going to change my mind if, 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 if I didn't convince anybody else. I mean.
I, I think, I think I agree with Dave that it's time to hear all three. We had new information brought to us, and that, it is serious. I want to be consistent when I'm up here voting, and if someone is going through a lawsuit, I want, that's very important to me. They're going through a lawsuit in Ohio, and we didn't check that out, that, that means that we have a problem there. We had it where we voted other people down in the past, and it was based off their past performance, and if the people from Johnson Control wants to defend themselves, I don't want them to be thrown and say they have no chance of getting this contract, but I do want to know what is going on in Ohio, and from what I've read, it didn't look nice.
And not, not tonight?
And I'm, and I'm not saying, and I'm, and I'm not accusing anyone of anything, because the newspapers aren't always right, but I've read things that, that are concerning, and it's nothing against anyone that's sitting here. You guys have represented yourselves well to us. Problem is, I am concerned, and that is why I, I want to see all three, and I want more information brought up.
And I just want to clarify for the record, too, when, when all three contractors were here at council, that would have been in the fall of last year. I had asked all three of them the same question about current litigation, and all three answered. All three have had experience with litigation from these matters, and at that meeting, the specific case from Ohio was mentioned. So, I just, I just want to be clear.
I just, you know what?
I understand, but I want to be clear, I want to be fair to them, that I have asked them, they, they have discussed that here publicly. That was discussed. You can go back and watch the tape. I'm just saying that's a matter of record.
Josh, that's fine. It's just that I did not know about that Iowa, that Ohio situation. I just didn't, I apologize if I was here and I, that went over, I just don't know how it would have went over my head.
I just want to be fair to them. All three contractors were asked about litigation. All three of them have had experiences with litigation from this type of work, so I, I think it's, it can come with the territory.
Okay. And Josh, have you, not to question you, have you read that information that I'm?
Yeah, I'm aware of the lawsuit. I'm also aware that they, if you could answer this one question for me, how many performance contracts do you have or have done approximately?
We're getting off the track here.
I just, I just want to answer that one question. You can just say it out loud. Several hundred, fifty?
Oh, near six thousand, roughly six thousand contracts, seven billion dollars in guarantees.
And, and, and so the comparable was that.
They only had one? Is that what you're saying?
That I was aware of. Yeah.
And that's what you guys are saying?
I believe Train had said four percent had been gone through litigation. I mean, so all of them had talked about this issue. I'm just wanting to be clear for the record, and to be fair, fair to them, that they haven't, not withheld or tried to bury anything. This has come out previously.
Can we discuss this after we?
It's, I think it was part of the conversation here. I think we're having a conversation. Yeah, yeah.
Are we ready for a roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
No.
Spurgettis.
Yes.
Talonier.
You want her to read what?
Can you, can you read that again? Is that possible, Dave?
I think they're misunderstanding of what the vote is for.
Alderman Talonier made a motion to reconsider agenda item number twenty-one, and Alderman Parker seconded.
You want to reconsider it for the new council?
We, yeah. I don't want to reconsider it. Let the new council.
You need to reconsider for the new council.
No, they, no, they can do it at their first meeting. They can.
No. Why can't they?
They can't bring it up for a year.
Someone who voted on the prevailing side.
They won't be able to bring it up for a year.
Yeah.
And if, if.
Let's ask the attorney.
I know.
So, on a motion to reconsider, it has to come from the prevailing party, which would be the, the no votes. That would be Alderman Talonier, and so what he's asking is to have it postpone, well, first is, are you going to reconsider? If the, if the answer to that is still four to three, no, you're not going to reconsider, that kills the issue. If it was a situation where four to three say we want to reconsider it, then the next step would be a motion to, to set it for a date certain, and then obviously, because this is the last full council session that the current council members will be, all of the current council members will be present and voting on, it would be by default going to the new, the new council.
Okay. With, he voted first, right, to do it? The second was by someone that did not vote that way?
Yes, that, that is correct. The second was by someone who did not vote that way, but the motion has to come from someone. It was a four to three vote. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
A yes vote gives it to the new council. A yes vote gives it to the new council.
So, will you ask Alderman Mayberry his vote over, please?
Right.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgettis, yes.
Still yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Barb.
Let's go home.
Seven eyes, no nace. Motion carried.
I would like to make a motion to consider agenda item twenty-one. I'm not entirely sure how I'm supposed to put this.
You'll do fine.
I would like to make a motion to.
Postpone.
Postpone. Thank you very much. Agenda item twenty-one until May sixteenth?
Twentieth.
Twentieth. My bad.
It's twen, uh, no.
Thirteenth, so thirteenth and twentieth.
Thirteen.
You don't want to do something like that on the first meeting of a new council meeting.
We got two of them here. Yeah, we do.
Well, you got, wow. You do what you want, but you make the motion.
I would at least the, the twentieth.
Come on. They've heard everything that they need to hear to vote today if we would let them.
You don't want.
The twentieth is the second. The twentieth would be the second one. So, the twentieth. Be my recommendation.
To the twentieth, second.
Is it, whoa. Is there a meeting? There isn't a meeting on the twentieth.
Yeah, there's two weeks in a row that, the next.
Because of the holiday.
The Memorial Day weekend holiday Thursday. So, he said twentieth, I said second. As in, I second it, not.
You guys are confusing it.
Yeah.
All right. Now, roll call for that.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgettis.
Yes.
Talonier.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Barb.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nace. Motion carried.
We're still on other business. There was two people that signed up. I think one has left, and.
Well, she was, she did the study session.
Yeah, study session. Okay, so, and then Barb. Is Barb still here? Barb is not here, has signed up. Okay? There's nobody in the public. That's fine. That's fine.
I know we've got a lot going on Saturday, especially the draft, but we are, we do have a guided bus tour of the exercise going on the Arsenal Saturday, so if you want to go, please let me know by Wednesday. We're going to meet at Vibrant Credit Union in East Moline before one o'clock, and then we'll take you to the reception center, and then to the island to actually watch the exercise in progress if you so choose. So, just let me know by Wednesday if you are interested in going on that, so.
What exercises? I'm not familiar with this.
Uh, it's, the state of Illinois is running two large-scale exercises in the state. One of them's here, and one's in Mount Vernon. So, we're going to have probably five hazmat teams coming in and four TRT teams coming in to take care of a, a scenario that's been set up by the state, so. I'll get these, these flyers sent out to you.
That's cool.
Thanks.
What are TRT teams?
Technical Rescue Team.
Oh.
And then some hazmat teams from the state.
And you said that's at the Arsenal at what time?
Yeah, so it's actually going to be going for twenty-four hours. They'll start at eight A.M. Saturday and go till Sunday about noon, but we're going to have a guided bus tour for VIPs from about one to three P.M. in the afternoon on Saturday.
That's cool.
Okay?
It is cool.
I, I would just like to say, I've seen a MABUS exercise on a smaller scale, though it did go on for hours. It's fascinating to watch. It really is. You can learn so much about your public safety personnel.
Is there any other council members?
Thank you, Chief.
That would like to bring anything up for the good of the cause?
Mayor, I, I do want to say, just on the record and very briefly, that it's, it's no secret that Alderman Talonier and I at times have had debates and clashes here and, and been on very much opposite sides of issues, but I want to say this from the bottom of my heart. Alderman Talonier, as the senior serving council member on this, on this body, what I just saw from you right there was an extraordinary amount of leadership and wisdom and foresight, and I thank you for reconsidering your motion.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If he would have been against you, Josh, you would have said the same.
All right.
He's being nice, Ivory. Come on.
Don't push it. He's being nice.
Yeah.
Item thirty-five.
Executive Session, five ILCS one twenty, Section two, C one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body. And five ILCS one twenty, Section two, C eleven, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. And five ILCS one twenty, Section two, C twenty-one, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section two point zero six.
Move to go into executive session for the exceptions cited.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spurgettis.
Yes.
Talonier.
Yep.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship. Geenan. Clark.
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nace. Motion carried.
What is that?
You got thirteen. You're here for part of the meeting.